Right, it is 7:00 PM and I would like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, we are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are located on the City Council Calendar item listed on the front page of MissionKS.org. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robin, please call the roll.
Eden Chumposi.
Here.
Loudon.
Here.
Ryer.
Here.
Kring.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Tosi.
Here.
All right, we have two public hearings this evening. The first is related to the tax increment financing redevelopment project plan for 5665 Foxridge, which was continued from the November 20th, 2024 meeting. I will now officially open the public hearing. If there are any members of the public that would like to make a comment on the tax increment financing redevelopment project plan, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Do we have any public comment? All right, seeing none, we will formally continue the public hearing on the 5665 Foxridge Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan to the January 15th, 2025 City Council Meeting at 7:00 PM for further discussion and action. Laura, can you please provide information on the remaining steps in the process for the benefit of the governing body and the public?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, as you may recall, we made the determination that because we sort of haven't hadn't negotiated acceptable terms to make a recommendation to you on the project, we wanted to reopen this public hearing and continue it to January. I think the conversations have continued with the developer and we do hope to be able to bring back a recommendation at the January meeting and have it slated for consideration of the TIF project plan, resolution of intent to issue IRBs, and I think you actually take a formal action to amend the underlying TIF district plan because the project is slightly different than what was established several years ago. So that's the answer.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Laura. Our second public hearing this evening is related to amendments to the 2024 budget. First, I will officially open our public hearing and then we will hear from our Deputy City Administrator, Justin Carroll. Following his presentation, if any members of the public would like to make a comment on this item with regards to the 2024 budget amendments, we will allow for public comment. Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. So, as we discussed this item last week, just this is kind of a technical thing that we have to do since even though we went through the 2025 budget process and we amended this current year budget, we still have to hold an official public hearing to exceed the, excuse me, the budget authority that was originally passed last year. And so that's what this item, the public hearing is for. And the funds, it's not the general fund, it's just five other different funds. And again, these were all anticipated costs due to, you know, capital improvement items that were budgeted last year. The project shifted into this year, kind of technical things of that nature.
Now, for public comment, if you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, I will now formally close the public hearing on the 2024 budget amendments. We do not have any special presentations or items related to the issuance of notes or bonds this evening, so I will move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has 12 items tonight. Our council committees met on December 10th and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the City Council adopt the consent agenda as printed, items 4A through 4L.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Eden Chumposi.
Aye.
Ryer.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Tosi.
Aye.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion case.
Right, we'll now move into public comment. If any members of the public would like to make a comment on items that are not included on our agenda tonight, now would be the time. Again, if you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Do we have any comments on items not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none, we would move into items from our Planning Commission. We do not have any items coming forward from the Planning Commission tonight, so we will move ahead into our committee reports. Councilmember Schmidt, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
I will, thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on December 10th and considered 12 items. The meeting minutes, Mission Mart Shopping Center CID Funding Agreement, Legislative Priorities, 2024 Budget Amendment, CMB Renewals, Drug and Alcohol Council Recommendation, 2025 Human Service Fund Allocation, and Facility Custodial Services Contract Award were approved under the Consent Agenda earlier tonight. Carrot Workers Compensation Renewal, Property Casualty/General Liability Insurance Renewal, 2025 Budget Adoption, and 2025 Budget Spending Authority will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Our first item, 7A, the Carrot Workers Compensation Renewal. The city has been a member of the Kansas Eastern Regional Insurance Trust, CARIT, a workers' compensation pool for local governments in Kansas since 2009. The trust comprises 17 member cities and counties. The 2025 premium for workers' compensation coverage is projected at $71,387, which is paid in two installments, the first in January and the second in July. The Carrot Board of Trustees confirmed the final projected premiums when it met on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. Premiums are based on the city's annual payroll, the level of exposure to risk that certain jobs may entail, and an experience modifier that reflects past claims. The 2025 premium is 7.3% less than the previous year. This is primarily due to fewer and less severe claims. The trust continues to maintain a strong emphasis on loss control and all member entities are actively engaged in proactive risk management activities. Because of this, members routinely receive a dividend from the trust when prior claim years are closed out, and an additional premium discount for active participation in the risk management activities. This year, the city received a dividend distribution of $9,971 from the trust and a program participation discount of $3,826. Funds in the amount of $118,700 were included in the 2025 adopted budget for workers' compensation premiums. Mayor, I move the City Council approve the city's 2025 workers' compensation coverage through the Kansas Eastern Regional Insurance Trust for an estimated annual premium of $71,387.
Second.
Motion and a second, any public comment on this item? Any council discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Kring.
Aye.
Tosi.
Aye.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Ryer.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eden Chumposi.
Aye.
Motion case.
Our next item, 7B, is Property and Casualty/General Liability Insurance Renewal. The city maintains several lines of insurance coverage, including property, inland marine, automobile, crime, and general liability, with the intent of reducing the city's exposure to risk and protecting assets. The city utilizes Seebiz Insurance Services, a third-party broker, to procure this coverage and to provide assistance in property and liability insurance matters throughout the year. Their costs are built into the annual premiums. The city has maintained insurance coverage with Travelers since 2019. In addition to Travelers, Seebiz solicited quotes from Midwest Public Risk and Chubb for the renewal. Travelers submitted a proposal to offer the same lines of coverage for 2025 for a cost of $297,026.97, an increase of 28% over the 2024 premiums. Chubb quoted property insurance coverage only since they do not offer any other municipal lines of coverage. Combining the Chubb property quote with the Travelers casualty and liability quotes resulted in an annual expense totaling $272,174. NPR is a public pooling entity and offered a full property casualty and liability quote at a cost of $286,286. This quote is 5% higher than the combined Chubb/Travellers quote and 24% higher than the 2024 premiums, but offers substantial policy differences to offset the higher premium. The primary difference is NPR's win/hail deductible at $25,000 per occurrence versus Chubb's win/hail deductible of $250,000 minimum. Another difference with public pool coverage is the city will no longer carry an umbrella policy. However, it will still maintain its $5 million liability coverage limit. NPR also carries a standard July 1st renewal date for all participating entities. Therefore, this proposal is only for the policy period of January 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025. The city will have to renew its coverage again in June 2025, but NPR has guaranteed the renewal will not contain any rate increases. A switch to NPR will also require the city to pay 1.5 premium payments, one and a half premium payments in 2025 because of the renewal date change. In addition to the coverage lines previously addressed, the city recommends renewing cyber liability coverage with Obsidian Specialty Insurance Company, DBA Cowbell, for $7,620.97. Mayor, I move the City Council authorize the purchase of property, casualty, and liability insurance with Midwest Public Risk for the policy period of January 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025 at an estimated total premium not to exceed $141,966. Additionally, authorize the purchase of cyber liability insurance from Cowbell for the policy period of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025 at an estimated total annual premium not to exceed $7,620.97.
Second.
Motion and a second, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, open it for council discussion, any council discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Ryer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye. Tosi. Aye.
Eden Chumposi.
Aye.
Motion case.
Item 7C, 2025 Budget Adoption. As part of the annual budget process, the city takes formal action to adopt the 2025 budget by ordinance. This ordinance represents one of two ordinances that are considered each December to finalize the city's annual budget and to provide expenditure authority. The ordinance will adopt the city's budget as well as the budgets for Rock Creek Drainage Districts Number 1 and 2. There are no changes to the 2025 budget approved by the City Council in August 2024. Mayor, I move the City Council approve an ordinance adopting the 2025 budget of the City of Mission, Kansas, Rock Creek Drainage District Number 1 and Rock Creek Drainage District Number 2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Ryer.
Aye.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Tosi.
Aye.
Eden Chumposi.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Motion case.
Item 17, 2025 Budget Spending Authority. As part of the annual budget process, the City Council takes formal action in December to authorize and direct the City Administrator to spend according to the adopted budgets for the city as well as Rock Creek Drainage Districts Numbers 1 and 2. The ordinance authorizes the City Administrator to spend in accordance with the approved 2025 annual budgets. Mayor, I move the City Council approve an ordinance authorizing the City Administrator to make expenditures in accordance with the adopted 2025 annual budgets for the City of Mission, Rock Creek Drainage District Number 1 and Rock Creek Drainage District Number 2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ryer.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Eden Chumposi.
Aye.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Tosi.
Aye.
Motion case.
And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Ryer, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on December 10th and considered six items. The meeting minutes, revisions to the Mission Municipal Code, Section 320, award on-call engineering consultants, mowing contract renewal, and parking agreement for park-and-ride lot were approved under the Consent Agenda earlier tonight. An obligation of funds for the Johnson Drive Rehabilitation Project will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. In 2022, the City of Mission applied for Surface Transportation Block Grant, or STBG, funds through the Mid-America Regional Council for the Johnson Drive Rehabilitation Project slated for construction in 2026. This federal funding administered by the Federal Highway Administration supports various infrastructure improvements, including highway and bridge projects, transit initiatives, and other transportation facilities. In 2023, Mission was awarded $6 million in STBG funds for their Johnson Drive project. The Johnson Drive Rehabilitation Project spans from Metcalf Avenue to Lamar Avenue, encompassing a vital four-lane divide arterial divided arterial road that serves as a regional east-west corridor. Johnson Drive has been undergoing redevelopment and this project aims to enhance the corridor by fostering revitalization, improving connectivity, and reducing traffic congestion and greenhouse gas emissions. The current infrastructure, which has aged and deteriorated, will be replaced and upgraded. Project improvements include pavement and curb replacement, stormwater enhancements, native plantings, widened sidewalks, and new streetlights and traffic signals. These enhancements aim to improve safety, walkability, and overall usability for residents and visitors. The total estimated cost of the project, including design, right-of-way acquisition, utility adjustments, construction, and inspection, is $13 million, $50,000. The required local match of $5 million, $10,000 for construction is anticipated to be funded through the city's capital improvement program through debt financing bonds, as well as with anticipated contributions from the Johnson County Cars Program. Mayor, I move the City Council approve a resolution obligating $5 million, $10,000 in local match for the Johnson Drive Rehabilitation Lamar Avenue to Metcalf Avenue project and execute a city-state agreement with KDOT.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Loudon.
Aye.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Tosi.
Aye.
Eden Chumposi.
Aye.
Ryer.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Motion case.
That concludes my report.
Great, thank you. We do not have any unfinished or new business tonight, so we will move on to our comments from the City Council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone have something they'd like to share tonight?
I do. I went on Friday out to the Resilient Stories event and heard a lot of really positive feedback about what Mission is doing, both from just kind of like a general operational governmental standpoint, but then also from the standpoint of what we are trying to do to help play our part in managing climate changes. And so I wanted to pass that along. We don't celebrate enough in the world sometimes, I think, and so wanted to make sure I shared that with everybody.
Great. All right, seeing nothing further, we'll move into our Council Committee Liaison Reports. These allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the activities of our boards, commissions, and committees versus Councilmember Loudon versus Sustainability Commission.
I was not able to attend the meeting, so I have no report.
Justin, is there anything crucial you want to share with us?
Nope, they recap the current, this year's budget and then since their vice chair is moving out of the city, traditionally the vice chair takes over as the chair for the next year. They just discussed who was going to fill those roles and how they'd handle that in preparation for their January meeting, so.
Great. Next, we have Councilmembers Kring and Schmidt for Parks Recreation and Tree Commission.
Yeah, a couple notes that came out of the meeting. We met on December 9th, December 9th. And one of the things I really like about this committee is, you know, the first part of the meeting is always focused on positive improvements. What are we hearing from the committee that is good to see? So a few things that came up over the last few weeks. We had the Mohawk Park Ribbon Cutting Ceremony that I was able to attend and so was able to see how big of a success it was, how many people did show up, which is really great on a kind of chilly afternoon. The community center did receive a Go Green Award presented to us on behalf of local communities, which is very exciting. We had the Holiday Lights and Fifties Festive Sites event a few weeks back on December 6th. So far, very positive feedback from both residents and the vendors, a couple of which said they sold out very quickly, which is great. It just gives us all the more reason to be able to have it again next year. Yeah, those were my notes. Oh, we had a really interesting presentation from a new master gardener that kind of came in, Marcus Hill, who gave us a lot of background on a lot of the programs available to both the city and residents in terms of, you know, education on how to build a functioning ornamental or turf area in their yard and around the city. So it was good to have an expert come in and then walk us through some of that.
Just a second, this is an awesome committee. They're all positive, they're driven by a great leader in the Parks and Recreation Group pen, and they just brought some great things to the table. They're real innovative and coming up with new solutions and new ideas and just diverse concepts, and they really play in well to what the city's doing anyway, so thank you.
Great. Next, we'll hear an update from Councilmember Tosi on the Mission Magazine Editorial Board.
I have not attended a meeting since the last report and will be attending the next one in the new year.
Mayor, are you able?
Yeah, well, we haven't met unless I just completely skipped over meeting. Our next meeting is January 9th, I believe, so, yep.
Great. And finally, Councilmember Carpenter Davis with Family Adoption Committee.
Well, as you can imagine, family adoption is in full swing right now. We're delivering gifts, distributing gifts on the 20th, which is this Friday, and everybody's been busy bringing gifts into the community center and, you know, Penn and his team, again, you know, like Debbie said, just outstanding work and it's a lot of work, I know. We're serving about 46 families, I believe, is that right, with presents and some gift cards to food and everything. And so we're reevaluating the program and seeing how the improvements made this year can influence next year, so thank you.
Great. We'll now move into my mayor's report. This evening, we have several reappointments and two new appointments to consider for our various boards and commissions. First, I put before you the appointments of Mike Lee, Robin Duklo, Wayne Snyder, and Stuart Braden for the Planning Commission with terms expiring December 31st, 2026. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move the City Council uphold the appointments of Mike Lee, Robin Duklo, Wayne Snyder, and Stuart Braden for the Planning Commission with terms expiring December 31st, 2026.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Eden Chumposi.
Aye.
Tosi.
Aye.
Ryer.
Aye.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Motion case.
Right, next I put before you the appointments of Lynn Bane, Ellen Parker, Jen Shoton, Alexa Root, and Josh Thede with terms expiring December 31st, 2026, and Angela Vandegrift with a term expiring December 31st, 2025 for the Sustainability Commission. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move the City Council uphold the appointments of Lynn Bane, Ellen Parker, Jen Shoton, Alexa Root, and Josh Thede with terms expiring December 31st, 2026, and Angela Vandegrift with a term expiring December 31st, 2025 for the Sustainability Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ryer.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Tosi. Aye.
Eden Chumposi.
Aye.
Motion case.
And next I put before you the appointments of Sarah Gritman, Katie Anderson, Sam Camosa, Dustin Wolf, Lindsay and Lindsay Kratzberg with terms expiring December 31st, 2026, and Chris Shankler, sorry, with a term expiring December 31st, 2025 for the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move the City Council uphold the appointments of Sarah Gritman, Katie Anderson, Sam Camosa, Dustin Wolf, and Lindsay Kratzberg with terms expiring December 31st, 2026, and Chris Schlenker with a term expiring December 31st, 2025 for the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? I will note that Lindsay and Chris are here tonight, so if either of you have anything you want to share, you can come up to the podium, or if you just want to give a wave, that works too. All right, seeing no further discussion, Robin, please call the roll.
Kring.
Aye.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Tosi.
Aye.
Ryer.
Aye.
Eden Chumposi.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Motion case.
All right. And then Laura, do you have any items that you would like to share under the City Administrator's report tonight?
Mr. Carroll has the December interim financial report. Robin, you have a couple of business, yes, fun things, and then I have a couple of quick comments.
Great.
I'll just note real quickly in the report as we're getting close to year end, things are just tracking pretty good. Frankly, the revenues haven't been primarily with sales tax as rosy as we'd seen the last few years. That growth really has kind of stagnated, but we're still on track to be right about where we projected. And then we're a little bit ahead of our projections on expenditures, so spending a little less than we anticipated. So it might still be a little close with a month ago, but looking good either way with revenues and expenses as we wrap up the current fiscal year.
Thank you. And we don't have any new businesses opening. December tends to be a slow month for that, but I have two fun things to announce to you. The first is that our esteemed judging panel met this evening before this meeting to determine the winners of our Downtown Business District Window Decorating Contest. So I am happy to announce to you that unanimously our judges chose Sand Hills Brewing for first place, Urban Prairie Coffee for second, and Warner's for third place. But there is still fan favorite voting open through the weekend, so we encourage you to vote with the QR code if you haven't already for our wonderful businesses who have entered the contest. My second piece of exciting news is that our friends at Truly Madly Depot have taken over the lease at Polly V's at 5735 Johnson Drive and are opening the book club KC. So the concept appears to be bookstore, maybe wine bar, maybe some coffee, lots of baked goods, it sounds like. So keep your eyes peeled, I think they're planning to open hopefully in the first quarter of 2025. That's all I have tonight.
Yes, well, I just want to, as we take a moment, and this is our last meeting, that we'll all be together in 2024, which doesn't even seem possible, but I wanted to thank you, and I know I speak for all of us on staff, for your support over this past year. We really appreciate the support and the trust that you place in us, and we often don't slow down enough times throughout the course of the year to really tell you that. So thank you. really tell you that. So, thank you. Wish you all a relaxing and joyful holidays, hoping you can connect with family and friends. And since the next time we see you, well, it will be 2025. Happy New Year, just a few days early, but you're going to need to come back rested and refreshed because our plates are already filling up. So we will hit the ground running after the first of the year. We'll see you at committee meetings on January 8th and our first city council meeting on January 15th. But again, thank you for the year that we've had, and we look forward to serving you and the community in the year ahead.
Great, thank you, Laura, and happy holidays to you and all of our staff. We really appreciate all the hard work you do for Mission. Next up would be executive session, and we do have the need for an executive session this evening. So the governing body will adjourn to executive session for the allotted time. When that time has expired, the governing body will reconvene to do one of the following. One, extend the time required for discussion and return to executive session, or two, continue with our city council meeting. As a reminder to the public, the governing body may take no binding action in an executive session. I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the City Council recess to executive session in accordance, in accordance with KSA 75-4319B1 for the discussion of personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Also attending the executive session will be City Attorney Dave Martin. The open meeting will resume in the council chambers at 8:00, 7:59 PM in 30 minutes.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Sochi.
Aye.
Eden Chompsey.
Aye.
Ryer.
Aye.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Kringle.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oh, Debbie. First was Mary.